Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight in the cold. Our current moderator, Cranston, is unavailable tonight to moderate. So our first order of business tonight is going to be taking motions from the floor for a temporary moderator. There's a nomination right now for Joshua Smith. Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, all those in favor for Joshua Smith to act as temporary moderator for tonight's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, Joshua?
I'll stay there. I'm just gonna go. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna see if I can get this to work. Everyone hear me okay? No? Can everyone hear me okay if I talk really close to the microphone?
Yes.
Okay. Let's start with our pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I've been informed that we have quorum. Quorum is 50, and we have 115 checked in. I'm gonna read the, whatever this thing is called. The warrant. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to one of the constables of the town of Barry and the county of Worcester. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You're hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Barry qualified to vote in the town elections and town affairs to meet at the Ruggles Lane School Auditorium on Tuesday, the 11th day of December, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. Then and there to act on the following articles. I entertain a motion to skip reading the articles. Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're directed to serve this warrant by posting an attested copy thereof in the bulletin boards of Ruggles Lane School, 105 Ruggles Lane, Barry Town Hall, Two-Its James Street, Town Clerk's Office, 40 West Street, Basement, Henry Woods Building, 40 West Street, First Floor, Woods Memorial Library, 19 Pleasant Street, 50 Main Street, South Barry and Barry Senior Center, 557 South Barry Road. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon. The town clerk at the time and place has said meeting aforesaid, given under oath or has this 13th day of November. Matt Ervin, Charles Chase, Gregory O'Sullivan, Constable's Return of Service, Worcester S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, on November 15th, 2018, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Barry by posting off attested copies of the same on bulletin boards and that same list that I just read. Dennis Fleming, Constable of Barry, returned to the very town clerk at 2:30 p.m. on the 15th day of November, 2018 AD. Signed, Ellen Clitten. And I'm guessing that Dennis is...
Yes.
Before we get started, there is one printing error in the booklet that you are given. It's in the appendix B. So about halfway in. It's the amended solar bylaw, and the heading says annual town meeting, June 19th, 2018. That should say special town meeting, November 11th, 2018.
December or November?
December, yeah. That's what my book is. So when we get to those, there are gonna be a couple of other changes from what's written in the book, but those will be made on the floor as the motions are made. So shall we get started? Article 1, FY 2018 Regional Animal Control. See if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay for costs associated with the assessment from fiscal year 2018 for regional animal control in the amount of $2,464.73, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $2,464.73 to pay for costs associated with the assessment from FY 2018 for regional animal control.
Is that microphone working well enough for everybody? Can whoever fix this microphone fix that microphone? That'll help.
Better?
I have a motion.
Better?
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. This is a peculiar one. We need at least nine tenths vote. If it were unanimous, we would not have to count hands. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Article 2. Public safety builder's risk policy. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of money to pay for costs associated with an invoice for Renaissance Alliance Insurance Services, LLC, invoice number 204004, in the amount of $530 from fiscal year 2018, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $530 to pay the costs associated with invoice number 204004 for Renaissance Alliance Insurance Services, LLC, from FY 2018.
I have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Before I move on, there are recommendations from the Finance Committee. The selectmen are willing to make recommendations if you ask them to. So if there's anything where you want to know someone's recommendation and you don't see it in the book, you can let me know, and I will ask them to make that recommendation. Otherwise, I'll assume you can read the book. We have no discussion. Again, this is a nine-tenths vote, so if it's unanimous, I don't have to count hands. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 3. Fire department engine four replacement. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds or authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow by the issuance of bonds or notes under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, the sums of $500,000 for the purchase of a new fire engine to replace fire engine number four, or any other sum. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the select board, and further that any pring room received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, lest any such pring be applied to the payment of costs of the insurance, if such bonds and notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to borrow to pay such costs by a like amount, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds or borrow by the issuance of bonds or notes under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, the sums of $500,000 for the purchase of a new fire engine to replace fire engine four.
I have a motion in the second. The question is about the wording of the motion, whether he said raise and appropriate.
To clarify the question, it's not gonna be to raise and appropriate, it's gonna be issuance of a bond.
Can you read the motion with the correct wording, please?
Absolutely. I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board
To borrow.
To borrow the issuance of bonds or notes under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, the sums of $500,000 for the purchase of a new fire engine to replace fire engine four.
Can I get a second on that reread? Is there any discussion or questions? This requires a two-thirds vote, similar to the last thing. If it's unanimous, we don't have to count hands. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 4. Assessor's vision upgrade. To see if the town will transfer from available funds a sum of money to purchase an upgrade for the assessor's vision system in the sum of $15,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $15,000 to purchase an upgrade to the assessor's vision system.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or discussion? Yes, I have a question.
What is the assessor's vision?
The question is, what is the assessor's vision system?
It's a software we use to calculate
Can you please step to the microphone?
That's a software system used to calculate the tax return, I mean, the taxes on the real estate.
Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 5. Police department tasers. To see if the town will transfer from available funds a sum of money to purchase of tasers for the police department in the sum of $6,000, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from stabilization fund the sum of $6,000 to purchase tasers for the police department.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Yes?
Have there been any unfavorable use of the tasers? Have there been, what happens if they're possible, to reduce the tasers?
The question is whether anyone has been tased and had to go to the hospital.
The taser has not resulted in anybody being hospitalized, no. An interesting question, because we're required to remove the tasers via EMS personnel, so... But have we sent anybody to the hospital simply because we tased them, no?
Are there any other ques... There's... Yes?
Do you currently use any kind of like gash cams, body cams, or anything?
The question is whether the police currently use gash cams or body cams.
No.
I have a question in the back. Can you... Maybe you could come up and ask it into the microphone. Can you ask the question into the microphone, so I don't have to repeat it?
Is this amount of $6,000, this gonna be adequate for the police department? Or are we gonna need more money to supply these tasers for our police department?
The $6,000 is the first payment in a five-year plan, which will be in our budget. Following that, the total cost of eight tasers, and there is no other option, is $25,000. We got a... We actually got a reduction from about $34,000, simply because we met with the people. We got the price down. It includes a lot of extra things, you know, the maintenance, the cartridges, training cartridges. But tasers change what it's doing. What we have is no longer supported. So they came out with a new way of doing business. This is it. If we want tasers, we have to get into a five-year plan. This is the first part of it. Right. So every five years, we pay $5,000. The extra $1,000 is training cartridges we're anticipating. And then at the end of five years, we own them, and the contract is replenished, but we... Right now, we don't have an option, because what we have is out of manufacture, and they stopped supporting it in a number of months. So if it breaks, it's broken.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Because this is a transfer from stabilization, it requires two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Article 6. Authorize senior transportation change from WRTA to MARTA. To see if the town will petition legislature to change the regional transportation authority covering the town of Barry from Worcester Regional Transportation Authority to Monticic Area Regional Transportation Authority, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote will petition the legislature to change the regional transportation authority covering the town of Barry from Worcester Regional Transportation Authority to Monticic Regional Transportation Authority.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any questions or discussion? I didn't... Someone wants to know why.
I'll refer all questions to our director.
The reason being is because we've had some issues with the transit authority we currently deal with, and we're looking to provide a van that will allow us to do a little bit more with it. The transit authority will not go to Gardner or Athol, and it's an issue of needs. You have many folks that need to go to those places, and they can't.
Yes?
Is it jurisdictional issue?
The question is, is it a jurisdictional issue? Question over here. The question is, does that mean you will not be able to go to Worcester?
No, folks can still go to Worcester.
Any other questions? I have one in the back.
How do people get to Worcester? I think people who's doctors are in Worcester.
The question is, how do people get to Worcester?
They... Eltebus does transport to Worcester. It sometimes is an issue, but they do transport.
So if people whose doctors are in Worcester, will still be able to get there?
Oh, yes.
The question is whether people whose doctors are in Worcester will be able to get there. Any other questions or discussion? Oh, yep. All the way back there. Can you come forward, please?
So people that need prescriptions at Walmart and Gardner, they can go there, and they would probably be taken there to Gardner?
The question was whether the new MARTA authority would take people to Walmart and Gardner?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions or discussion? It needs a simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Article 7. To amend Article 6 of June 19th, 2018 Annual Town Meeting. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund $50,000 to be expended during the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for necessary and expedient cable-related purposes consistent with the license agreement, of which the sum of $50,000 shall be allocated from the available fund balance, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the expense of $50,000 from the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund to the expenditure of the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019, under the direction of the Board of Selectmen for necessary and expedient cable-related purposes consistent with the license agreement.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions? I have a question over here.
I just wanna know what you're going to do with that money.
The question is, what's gonna be done with the $50,000?
There's big concerns for the quality of some of the cable. They plan to upgrade how the cable is put on, decide, and also pays for the local access, the things they put on in the program.
There's a question over here.
Is priority given to people who don't already now have cable, versus to either upgrading the cable or not?
The question is whether this has to do with upgrading people's cable, and who has priority.
This isn't for upgrading yet, but we are still looking into upgrading. We're trying to get pricing for how we can cover the rest of the town, if we can put that a town expense, or how we can get into that expense. But this, right now, is just to upgrade the existing service and to keep the, you know, the program going, the existing local channel.
Any other questions?
I don't have cable myself, but I'm guessing that cable may be kind of old technology. I think spending $50,000 to upgrade something is relevant. However, should we be thinking about bringing in some new technology and maybe spending $50,000 in that direction instead of upgrading old technology? Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? This requires a simple majority. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Article 8. To accept MGL Chapter 64 NS Section 3 and adopt a 3% local sales tax on marijuana products. To see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of MGL Chapter 64 NS Section 3 as amended by Section 13 of Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, to impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer as a consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to adopt provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 64 NS Section 3 as amended by Section 13 of Chapter 55 of the Acts of 2017, and to impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer as consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion on this? I have a question.
The question I have, a 3% tax on pawn, is this gonna help our tax base?
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Is this really gonna help our tax base? Where's this money gonna go? And what's it gonna provide for the community? I mean, we're just gonna have crowds of people hanging around the street? And are we gonna benefit from this? I mean, really, come on.
The 3% figure is the maximum that we're allowed to assess by law.
Please don't get into conversations.
Yeah. The money... The funds are received will go into the general fund, which will be used to offset expense or whatever the town, through a town meeting vote, decides to do.
Are there any other questions? Any other discussion? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
I heard one no, so it's a majority. Motion carries. Article 9. Marijuana Licensing Bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Barry by inserting a new Chapter 160 Marijuana Establishment Licensing, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like a motion to... I'd like to move that the town vote to amend the code of the town of Barry by inserting a new Chapter 64 Local Licensing of Marijuana Establishments, as it appears in the Finance Committee booklet as Appendix A, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of Barry.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Before... Can I just ask, is the wording in the booklet accurate? Do you need any edits to this one?
This one's accurate.
This one's accurate? Okay. Ian? Can you step up to the microphone?
First of all, I'd like to just say whoever spent a lot of time and effort to construct this licensing bylaw, personally, I think did a very good job. There's one concern that I have, and I'm hoping maybe Town Council might be able to shed some light on it, and it's with regard to Section D, and that's access to premises and information, specifically Section 1.
Can you refer to the page number?
I'm sorry. Page 7 of the Appendix, Section D, with regard to unannounced, unscheduled inspections of the premises. And I'm not quite sure what...
So I guess the question is regarding Section 5, D, 1. On page... It's page 7 of Appendix A. It starts off, Marijuana Establishments Shall Consent to Unannounced, Unscheduled Periodic Inspections of Its Premises by the Board of Selectmen and Agents of the Board of Selectmen for the Building, Health, Police, and Fire Departments on Week Days, and goes on from there. So I think there's asking for clarification of what that means. Asking for clarification of enforceability.
So the clause says that as part of this town bylaw, that the establishment will consent to unannounced and unscheduled inspections by the Board of Selectmen, agents of the Board of Selectmen, from the Building, Health, Police, Fire Departments on weekdays. It also then goes on to say that in addition, routine inspections may be made on weekdays or in regular town business hours. I'm sure some entities in town may have the legal club to do that. I'm just concerned about, first of all, conflicting with potential CCC regulations regarding who can access a property. And I just wanted to know your opinion, Jim, with regard to this.
I'll repeat what he says. He doesn't believe that the Canvas Control Commission has passed anything that would conflict with this, as of yet.
So as part of 935 CMR 500, they do restrict who can access the facility unannounced, actually, I think is a concerning word. Just to clarify, obviously, the police or the fire department can make an unannounced visit if there's a concern or if there's an emergency. But for a lot of these other entities, I don't know that unannounced conflicts with.
Do the Selectmen want to make any clarifications or amendments regarding that before we move on? Okay, let's give them a minute. Bear with us for just one more minute. Let them finish discussing it. I believe that they're preparing an amendment. Okay. So you may make an amendment after the rest of the discussion. That's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe an amendment, or will be re-read?
No, he wants to make an amendment. We're too deep in. That would be an amendment. Okay. Ed, I think you had a question?
I really thought that all inspections by Board of Health, by Fire Department are unannounced. I can't imagine what good a health inspection is if the restaurateur knows to boil all those glasses before the inspector comes in, or the keeper of the slum apartment building knows to take all the stuff off the back stairs and the back porches before the fire inspector comes in. It just seems inspections that are announced are useless.
Dean, did you have another follow-up?
So I think I did clarify that obviously the police and the fire department at any point, you know, they need to go up there. I do understand that. I guess, I guess the concern is that when there's unannounced, with all due respect to the Board of Selectmen, but unannounced inspections by the Board of Selectmen, I'm not quite sure what purpose that serves. And I guess a concern, especially given the high security concerns around these establishments and security requirements, is someone driving up the road and knocking on the door could be concerning. And I'm not sure about the, which is why I asked Jim, the enforceability of that.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just to emphasize, personally, I do think this is a good bylaw. I do think giving the Selectmen some authority over this process is a smart idea. This bylaw here also really works in conjunction with an article that's coming up a little bit later with regard to the marijuana bylaws. This one just, you know, the Planning Board's been working pretty diligently over the last year on the marijuana bylaws. And this really has just come up, and it's really well-written. And I would wonder if maybe the Board might consider tabling this amendment and having it prepared for the next town meeting where it would really work in conjunction with the marijuana bylaw, because this is good for the town, this bylaw. But I think maybe a little more work on it.
I have a question up here in the front row.
Yes, for minutes, Mr. Ian Dooley was applying for the permit. He was quite open to all types of inspections. And now things seem to have been changed. I would like to know why that is. Inspections by the Selectmen, the Board of Health, the Police Department, Planning Board. Actually, as he was building it, we were actually invited to come up and see how it was being constructed. And now we're getting a 180. Thank you.
I have a question here.
Are, in places like that have alcohol licenses, are they also open to unannounced inspections by the Board of Selectmen, specifically not the rest of the line, but just the Board of Selectmen?
The question is whether the Board of Selectmen, under our current bylaw, have the ability to conduct unannounced visits of alcohol-serving establishments? Can someone answer that question?
The answer is no.
So what is the difference? Why are we looking to add that into this?
The question is why would this be treated differently than an alcohol establishment?
Because currently, the general public believes that this particular industry needs a little more oversight in its birth and mistake. And so there was input from people that thought this would be a proper application at this time. So that's why it ended up in the bylaw. I'm just, there you go.
Niker?
If you look at Page 6, under, again, under Security Specific Requirements, in the first section, it talks a great deal about the video footage from a video surveillance organization. And I've spoken to the Chief of Police, and there's some concern regarding that and whether or not that would be admissible in court. So I'm hoping he can maybe give some input on that section as well.
Sure. The question was whether the video surveillance that's mentioned in 5C1 would be admissible in court.
This section is troublesome in that there are requirements for search and seizure, and the main requirement being that you have to have a search warrant. And then there are accepted exceptions to a search warrant. And currently, there's no accepted exception that says it's written in a bylaw, and it circumvents the idea of due process with a search warrant. Meaning, basically, I just think that this is worded awkwardly and might cause, it might cause the owner to actually voluntarily give us video, and then it'd be challenged because the bylaw said it really wasn't all that voluntary. So I just think the wording might get us into trouble, and it could be better worded.
Niker?
I would ask that this amendment be tabled at this time so we can have further discussion, and if necessary, come back to it at the end of the meeting.
A motion to table is not something that we can debate. So we have to have an up or down vote right now as to whether we want to table this motion? Oh, if there's a second. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion table? There was a second. So a simple majority for tabling, correct? Jim, simple majority for tabling? The motion. Someone has moved to table the motion. The whole thing. The whole thing. They moved to table the whole thing, the whole article. So I just need clarification as to whether it's majority or two-thirds. Two-thirds. Okay. All, no discussion, unless it's a point of order. So, oh, so let me clarify what tabling means. So when we table a motion at the end of the meeting, someone could make a motion to bring it back off the table. That person needs to have voted to table in the first place. Yes, Jim? At any time during the meeting. Someone could make that motion. Between articles. But before we adjourn. Yes, is this another point of order?
Yes, it is. If, if, if the motion is tabled, and no motion is subsequently made to take it off the table and put it again, then what comes of this motion when the meeting is over?
It goes away. They do not carry over to the next meeting. So if that happened, then there would have to be a new motion made on a new article, on a new warrant at either the next special or the next annual town meeting. Any other points of order, understanding what we're about to vote on? Sam, do you have a question?
If we make this decision to table it?
No, no, that would be discussed. You're not allowed to discuss whether it's a good idea or not. You're only allowed to ask me questions about what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of tabling this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to tabling the motion?
Aye.
It's not unanimous. We're going to need to count, because it needs to be a two-thirds vote to table. So do I have counters? I've got a couple of counters. Great. So you can count that side?
Do you have that meeting table?
Yes.
It's right in the front.
Okay, we just confirmed it is a two-thirds as required. So could everybody who wants to table the motion, please stand? Niker, can you come up here, please? Because you made a motion, we're going to need to sign it. Nine, it's Article 9. Thank you for your patience. Please be seated. All of those opposed to tabling, please stand. The, please be seated. The motion to table carries with 81% of the vote.
I have 85, 2, 19, no.
85, yes, 19, no. We're moving on to Article 10, to amend the Solar bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Berry zoning, Chapter 140 by amending Section 140-10.1.1 Solar Energy Facility Special Permit and Site Plan Review, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Berry zoning, Chapter 140, by amending Section 140-10. zoning, Chapter 140, by amending Section 140-10.1 Solar Energy Facilities Special Permit and Site Plan Review, as it appears in the Finance Committee booklet as Appendix B. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of Berry.
I have a motion and a second. I understand there are some edits that need to be made to what's in the booklet?
No.
Yes, please.
There are a few edits to be made to this bylaw. The first edit is in Section C, Definitions and Use Regulations, under Commercial Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Facility. And the change is, in the last sentence of that section, it's being changed to read, "New commercial large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facilities shall not exceed 25 megawatts of total capacity for all newly permitted facilities in aggregate, beginning on the date of adoption of this revised bylaw." And the reason that's being added is, it was a little bit confusing what we had originally in there. Second revision.
Before you move on, does anybody have any questions about that revision? Everyone understood what was said? Okay, proceed, please.
Second revision is on page five. And it's section, I'm sorry, page five, and it's, it's paragraph J. And it says, "No pesticides or defoliants may be used on site." It goes on to say, "Use, storage, application, transportation, and disposal of pesticides or defoliants shall be in accordance with the Massachusetts Pesticide Control Act, GLC 123B, Section 2." We're taking out that last sentence because these, these requirements were contradictory.
So, just a moment. This is, we're in G1I. There is no J.
There is, but it's, it's inside I.
Oh, ah, there we go. I. So we're in J, it's just that it looks like it's inside the I paragraph. Well, that, that formatting is.
And the reason for this is, we were controlling the use of pesticides and defoliants, but we decided to prohibit their use completely on solar facilities.
Any questions about that before we go on to the next one? Proceed.
Okay. The next one is on page eight. And it's under Section N, Monitoring and Maintenance, Number 5, Noise. And in the last sentence, we use the word ambient, and we define what ambient means, and we're changing the lowercase a to a capital A in ambient. And the last one is on page nine. And it's under Section 4, Financial Surety. And about a third of the way down in the paragraph, we had written, "At or before the second anniversary of the approval of the special permit, the applicant, owner, or operator shall deposit with the Berry Treasurer in United States funds in an amount equal to 25 percent," and it continues. We changed the word "funds" to dollars. And the reason that was done was because we didn't want it in any kind of other currency.
Okay. We're going to treat the motion as having moved the amended text, so we don't need a separate amendment for that. So are there any discussion or questions about this motion? Yeah?
I just wanted to clarify why we're making a change in the solar regulation. There were a number of solar facilities installed in Berry over the last three or four years. There was a great cry from the people that they were, there were too many, and they were too big, and they were too visible. We changed the solar regulation a few years ago, and greatly restricted the number of facilities and where these facilities could go. We've, we've all, we've taken a second look at this now, and there are property owners in Berry that have large pieces of property that want to put solar facilities on that property. And we think that can be done in a, in a reasonable and, and manner that doesn't detract from the, from the ambience of Berry. And we've changed this to allow that, but still maintain a reasonable amount of control over it. So that's the reason we're proposing this change.
Did the planning board have a vote within two weeks of this meeting and approve vote? What was the vote on this motion from the planning board?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, we did vote on this, this revision to the solar bylaw, and it was approved.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep?
All right. So on page two, there is a section for residential ground-mounted and residential roof-mounted systems. Can I get some clarification on the output is not allowed to exceed 110 percent of their residential unit electrical consumption? Does that mean, does that mean I can't get like a battery backup that, you know, that can charge or, I guess, use electricity for a couple of weeks on the house? Or like, I can't upgrade to an electric car? Because, you know, obviously you need more panels?
Can I get a clarification? In response, no, no, not from you, from, in response to the question?
Yes, that's correct. For the, for the residential ground-mounted and roof-mounted, we've limited the, the output to not to exceed 100 percent, 110 percent of the residential electrical consumption.
Do you have a follow-up? If you want to propose an amendment to this, you can propose an amendment. Okay. The comment, which should have been made at the microphone, was that if he added a car in his house, that would just be more consumption, so that would raise the percentage. That was the comment. Any other questions or discussion about this motion? Yes?
Andrew Kukas. I've attended quite a few of these planning board meetings, and one of them was, it was slight worry about the substation making noise. And from what I've found so far, the substation is full, and National Grid is planning to build a new substation, where it's going to be out of sight, and nobody's going to hear it.
Any other discussion or questions? Yes, in the back?
I'm wondering if the planning board made any provisions for payment in lieu of taxes?
The question was, did we make any provisions for payment in lieu of taxes? We did do that. And that's item L on page five, near the bottom of the page. It reads, "All commercial solar facilities must enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement, a pilot agreement with the Town of Berry before beginning construction. Terms and conditions for pilot agreement to be determined by the Town of Berry Board of Selectment."
Any other questions? Comments? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The substation upgrade, do we know if that's going to be on South Berry Road? That's where the original substation is.
Does anybody know the answer to that question? The question is, where the upgraded substation will be located?
Because there is a substation right around, I would say, about 800 Berry Road. I'm not sure of the exact address, but that does create quite a 60 cycle hum. So if they are planning to put another one somewhere else, that would be wonderful. But if they put it in the same spot, it'll double the noise of all the neighbors in that area. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Mr. Moderator, in previous response, referred to a paragraph L on page five.
Can you clarify where you were reading from when you called our attention to that?
This was, this was one of the revisions made to it. So, so it's not in the, the appendix that you have.
All right. Seeing no more hands. This is a zoning bylaw. Therefore, it requires a two-thirds vote. If it's not unanimous, we'll count. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
I heard some opposition, so we're going to need to count. Can my counters come forward, please? We're going to count. Everyone who is voting in favor of this motion, please stand. Please be seated. All those opposed to the motion, please stand. The motion carries?
Seventy-seven fourteen.
Seventy-seven fourteen. Article 11, Marijuana Establishment Zoning Bylaw. To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Berry zoning, Chapter 140, by inserting a new section, 140-11.2, Adult Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the code of the Town of Berry zoning, Chapter 140, by inserting a new section, 140-11.2, Adult Marijuana and Marijuana Establishments, as it appears, as it appears in the Finance Committee booklet as Appendix C. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the Code of Berry.
I have a motion and a second before we proceed. Are there typographical changes that you want to make to the text of Appendix C? Is it just the one on number 17?
Yes, there's one change.
Yep. It's page eight.
On page eight, item number 17, Number of Marijuana Retailer Establishments. We're changing this. It reads, "The number of licensed marijuana retail establishments in the Town of Berry shall not exceed 20 percent of the licenses," and it continues. We're changing that to read, "Shall not exceed 20 percent of the number of liquor licenses for off-premise alcohol consumption that have been issued pursuant to Mass. General Law, Section 138, Section 15, as rounded up to the nearest whole number in the event the number is a fraction." If I can provide a little explanation of that. The reason for this is, the state law allows a limited number of retail marijuana establishments based upon the number of, of off-premise alcohol consumption licenses in the town. Right now, we have, we have, I think, five. Five. We have five off-site alcohol consumption licenses. So 20 percent, we can have one retail marijuana outlet. The reason we added this language is because in the state law, it says if you add another alcohol off-premise consumption license, then the 20 percent, you round it up to the next whole number. So it's not just a fraction. It's, if we, if we were to add one license here, that would be six off-site facilities. 20 percent of that would be 1.2, but that would allow two marijuana establishments in town. And what we had before didn't reflect that, that language. So that's why we're changing that.
Before we proceed, this is a zoning bylaw. Did the zoning board have a hearing within two weeks of this meeting, and how did they vote?
Mr. Moderator, we did have a hearing two weeks prior to this, and we voted in favor of this bylaw.
Any questions or discussion about the bylaw? Dean? Dean?
First of all, once again, there's been a lot of time and work put into this. It's a big subject. It's new. There's still, I think, some potential very serious concerns. Not a lot, but there are a few. If I could first, I guess, bring up on section G, two. And the language says the proposed AMUs-
Can you give us a page number?
I don't have the page number.
Okay.
Page seven.
Seven.
Proposed AMUs shall be located at a minimum distance of 100 to 500 feet from the following. That would, and maybe Jim wants to talk about this, that subjectivity could be really concerning to an applicant or also the town if there's not a set distance and there's a degree of subjectivity in whether it's 100 to 500. And I guess I could follow up with a second part to that question because in the same section, section 2A, there's nothing there. I don't know what was intended to be there.
Clarify. 2A. In G says a public library. The version in the bylaw says, A, public library, B, public swimming area or pool, C, residential dwelling or group homes, D, structure used for religious purposes.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. In section two, where we talk about the proposed AMUs and their locations to the following activities, public libraries, residential structures, we got a lot of comments. We originally had 500 feet. But we got a lot of comments that there's properties that may be useful for this type of activity, but they're located a little closer. We put in a range of distances on here of 100 feet to 500 feet. There is no subjectivity in that. It's something that the planning board would look at, and if, depending upon the particular layout of the area, we might want to see a 500-feet setback from a public library. Other locations, it might be more appropriate for 100 feet. So it's to give the planning board the authority to make a decision based on the circumstances of a particular application.
Any other questions or comments about the bylaw?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to amend Article 11 Marijuana Establishment Zoning Bylaw as shown in the Finance Committee booklet, Appendix C, by deleting section G, items 17, 18, and 19.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
You need a second.
I have a motion and a second. So what's happening here is there's a motion to amend the original motion. So we can discuss whether this is a good idea, then we'll vote on whether to amend the original motion. It doesn't mean that the original motion is going to necessarily go up or down. We're just changing what it is, the original thing we're going to vote on. Does everybody understand that? So the proposal is to remove three sections that are on page eight of Appendix C, eight and nine, getting on to nine, 17, 18, and 19. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Do you want me to read 17, 18, and 19?
Yeah, I can. The proposal is to remove section 17, the number of marijuana retailer establishments, which was read. That's been modified, but it's the no more than twenty percent. Eighteen says not more than three indoor marijuana facilities are allowed by special permit in the Town of Berry. And nineteen says no more than three outdoor marijuana facilities are allowed by special permit in the Town of Berry. So all three of those are limiting the number of permits that the planning board can give out. Yep?
Would this all be removed?
The question is, why would you want to remove those numbers? Matt?
Because all three items are written exactly the same in the marijuana licensing bylaw. That's a general bylaw that we had on the table earlier that has been tabled. But the point was, this is a licensing issue, which normally falls under the Board of Selectment and general laws, not a zoning one. And we're using the exact same language in our marijuana licensing bylaw. So it was my opinion that due to redundancy, potential clerical errors in the future when people may try to revise bylaws, it's not a benefit to repeat the exact same language in another bylaw. And I believe it fits under the Board of Selectment and the general laws, not zoning.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, we met with the Select Board to go over the marijuana bylaw a few weeks ago. There were revisions that they requested, most of which we made. This was a revision that we discussed on the planning board, and we, with all due respect, are opposed to this request for modification of the bylaw. We've limited the number of indoor facilities and outdoor facilities to three. We're taking a fairly cautious approach to this. We want to start out small. We can always amend this number at a later date and increase the number. The number in, the language in number seventeen is identical to what's in the licensing bylaw that has been tabled. But we think it's appropriate to leave that in the zoning bylaw.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Yes?
If that other licensing one was tabled-
I'll repeat her question. Go ahead.
If the licensing was tabled, and this is changed, then there's no regulation at this time.
So the concern from a member of the Finance Committee is that since the initial bylaw had been tabled, that taking this out will leave no regulation on the numbers. Nicker?
I move that we table this as well.
What are you moving to table?
I move that we table the-
Amendment?
The entire article.
That's out of order. We have to, you can do that after we deal with the amendment, unless you want to move to table the amendment.
Then I say we table the amendment and then vote table the article.
One at a time. There's a motion to table this amendment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to table this amendment. There's no discussion allowed. Points of order, if anybody doesn't understand what's going on. So stacking up here. So this motion is to stop discussing the amendment to the original motion. All those in favor of tabling the amendment that the Selectmen proposed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to tabling that amendment?
Aye.
This requires a two-thirds vote. I'm going to need to have counters. All those in favor of tabling the amendment to the original motion, please stand. That motion to table carries, so there will be no more discussion of that amendment.
Sixty-four to nineteen.
Sixty-four and nineteen. Nicker, were you going to make another motion? Nicker was going to make another motion. I'm going to recognize her first.
I make a motion to table the article.
There's a motion to table the entire article.
Yes. Second.
It's been seconded. Does everybody understand this? So if we table it, we won't be voting on it unless somebody brings it back up before the end of the meeting. All those in favor of tabling the article, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I need counters. Please be seated. All those opposed to tabling, please stand. Two-thirds is required, which would be sixty-six percent.
Forty-nine to thirty-one.
Forty-nine to thirty-one. So that's not going to happen. So we can keep on talking about the original motion, but the amendment that the Selectmen offered is no longer in consideration. We need, Nicker, we need you to-
Do you have that table motion? Did she sign it?
No.
She was too pleased.
We have to have, every time there's a motion, we need a signed copy for the clerk's records. So we're back to discussing the zoning bylaw. Any other questions or discussion about the zoning bylaw? Yes, Kathy?
I just have a concern, and could be more specific about exactly where this could be located. Because if you're saying it's only a hundred feet, so you're talking about the three commons in our town, South Berry, Berry Plains, and Berry Common. And if it's only a hundred feet, then just down the road from each one of these commons, there just could be a house that's something converted into a center that could be used. You know, I'm imagining this thing out on a road by itself like Oklahoma is in last year, but could you help me understand it, please?
So the question is more specifically where these things might be located.
Yeah, the question, the range of distances that we've provided, it can be a hundred feet or it can be 500 feet. And that would be at the discretion of the planning board based upon the individual circumstances. So it wouldn't have to be a hundred feet. It could be up to 500 feet away from these other activities.
Mr. Moderator, would the usual rules of contacting a butters apply under these circumstances as with any other planning or zoning situation?
I think the question is, in the hearing for the special permit granting, would the butters have to be notified?
Yes, during the hearing process, all the butters would have to be notified.
Any other questions? Kathy? Sorry. I recognize Kathy.
I just wanted some clarification.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
I'm a little short here. I just wanted some clarification. Page thirteen, it's double A. It says marijuana establishment. And if you go back to the definitions of marijuana establishment, it does include a cultivator. So I don't know if I'm misreading this, but it says double A. It says marijuana establishment are allowed in business, commercial zones. But then if you go back to page six, allowed use is 4B. It says marijuana cultivator is allowed in a business and a commercial and industrial zone. So I think that's a discrepancy that perhaps should be clarified. My guess is that the board intended that it should be business, commercial, and industrial. Am I reading that right?
Can we get clarification as to, did you forget industrial in AA, or does AA only apply to dispensaries?
We need one question.
Okay, give us a minute. Okay, give us a minute.
Section AA only applies to retail stores, and that's limited to commercial.
Kathy?
I think it refers to marijuana establishment. When, if you're looking at the definitions, it specifies marijuana cultivator, independent testing, marijuana retailer. So it looks like either the definition should be changed or that article. And it also kind of makes me wonder what other mistakes are in here, substantive mistakes, not just clerical, but substantive. Makes me a little nervous.
Could everybody hear that? Her concern is that since it says marijuana establishment and there's a definition of that elsewhere in the article, that includes things more than just the dispensary, that this is unclear, and it raises a concern to her that other things in the bylaw may be unclear. Yes?
There's a demolition going on on South Barry Road and Main Street. Is that perhaps be a site for dispensary or marijuana store?
The question is whether the old mill site that's being demolished is a viable location under the bylaw, under the proposed bylaw. Does the planning board know that? Seems awfully close to a park.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The question is whether the old mill building, which is currently being demolished, is a viable location under the bylaw. I think it's right across the street from Nornay Park. Or the common?
Mr. Moderator, we don't have enough information to answer that question.
Yes?
Do you know how different zoning laws for as far as all the places we have to sell alcohol, I know we have a facility coming up, and we have a brewery. Do you have the same kind of zoning for them, or they just allow twelve residential residences?
The question is, what are the zoning bylaws that apply to producers of alcohol? I can probably answer that for you. We have what's called a permissive zoning bylaw. Our zoning bylaw lists all the things that you're allowed to do and what, in each of the zones. So I don't know the specific answer about that, but in general, a commercial operation goes in a commercial or industrial zone. The commercials, the package stores on the common...
But there's no zoning because there's a parking lot stand.
So the way that zoning works, if you don't mind me explaining this, I'm on the zoning board. So the way the zoning works is there's a map that covers the whole town, and every part of the town falls into a zone. That's why they call it zoning. So if you think about the common area, that's the business-commercial district. It goes a little bit of a distance away from what you think of as the commons, the business-commercial. You can only have businesses, commercial things are only allowed to be there. Our business-commercial district does allow residences. So you can have a residence in a commercial zone, but you can't have a commercial business in a residential zone. There are different kinds of residential zones all over, and then there's agriculture, which kind of falls out of the purview of zoning to a certain extent. So it's complicated. Dean?
Just another question on the proposed bylaws, page thirteen, section BB, under marijuana retailer storefront, section six. It seems like there's some confusion. The way it's written, it says, "The sale of marijuana and marijuana products will be the sole use of said premises. It cannot be combined with any other food, beverages, or items sold within the town of Barry." So this would seem to restrict a marijuana retailer from selling anything infused products because they may be another food or beverage or an item sold in the town. I was hoping for clarity on that.
The purpose of that was so that you couldn't combine a marijuana retail establishment with any other type of store, whether it was be selling alcohol, food, or any other beverages. What we say is sale of marijuana and marijuana products will be the sole use. That includes all marijuana products. I have something else to add as well.
Go ahead.
This is a general comment about the marijuana bylaw. People in town of Barry voted fifty-seven percent in favor of the referendum in November of 2016 to allow legalization of marijuana and marijuana establishments. We've conducted public hearings in the town of Barry. We heard from a lot of people. We heard comments on both sides. There are people that see this as a business opportunity and want to get involved in it, and there are people that did not want to see the sale of marijuana or the legalization of marijuana at all in the town of Barry. We've tried to craft a bylaw that sort of takes a middle path between these two diverse views where we are able to regulate what goes on in town. We're able to keep it away from certain activities where we don't want to see it there. We're keeping it away from schools, but we're also allowing it as people voted for in the referendum. So not everybody is happy with everything that's in this bylaw, and I wouldn't expect them to be, but we think it's fairly reasonable and fair of what we've done. Now, one thing I want you to keep in mind, if this bylaw is not approved tonight at this town meeting, then there's no control whatsoever on activities, be they retail cultivation, outdoor cultivation, dispensaries, testing facilities, or anything. So if we don't pass this bylaw, then it's, anything goes. Now, we have another article on the warrant after this to extend the moratorium from now until, from December thirtieth until June to allow a moratorium so that we can work on another bylaw. But if this doesn't pass and that doesn't pass, then there's no control, period, by the town. So I just want everyone to understand that.
Kathy, hands up.
I do want to remind everybody that there still is some control in that the selectmen have an opportunity. There still is some control in that the selectmen do have the authority to issue HCAs. Without an HCA, which is a host-community agreement, you can't even get a special permit. So regardless of whether this zoning bylaw passes tonight, there is still that measure of control. And as Mr. Martin said, there is still an opportunity to vote for a moratorium. So I wanted to remind everybody of that. It's not quite as dire as he said.
I'd just like to add to that, that during our development of the marijuana licensing bylaw, one of the things we did is we actually wrote into the bylaw that requires the Board of Selectmen to bring in the planning board during the host-community agreement process. So we have a broader base of discussion. We also require that the Board of Selectmen would have to have a minimum two public meetings prior to completing any agreement on that. We actually wrote the bylaw so that the town could hold the Board of Selectmen accountable to your needs. We brought in the planning board because we felt like it actually gave us a greater spot with the host-community agreement for some of the things that are deemed subjective in a zoning bylaw. We have been trying to work together. Both boards have been working very diligently. But the truth is, without the licensing bylaw, the Board of Selectmen can and make any decision they want without anybody else's input other than one public hearing. And then we can do as we choose. I do not believe that's the right action, but it is up to the town to decide how they want us to move forward. Otherwise, the host-community agreement is the authority and will determine what happens in this town. Without either of those other bylaws in place, there is no limit on the licenses. The limit is based on the Board of Selectmen and how many host-community agreements they want to give out. So keep that in mind as you review the different bylaws that have been presented, and likely we will have to return and come back to those at some point and see how we can make this work.
Nikah?
When you look at this article, one thing that you need to be very aware of is that the CCC or the state-level regulations are definitely written regarding cities. We are not a city. So when we look at what the state regulations are, the state regulates only five hundred yards away from a public school. In our town, if you take away only five hundred yards from a public school, you have left the vast majority of the town available for a license of any kind. That's what we are hoping that we can avoid, and that's why I've gone to so many planning board meetings, why I've gone to as many public hearing meetings as humanly possible, is to make sure that that continues to remain in every bylaw that we can put into is that we do want to make sure that we are protecting our youth. That is the goal of all of us in this community, is to protect our youth as much as possible. And when you look at what this planning board bylaw states, it does very carefully make sure that what we are doing is protecting the youth of this community. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to comment on what the chairman of the planning board was saying, that without theirs, it would turn into the wild, wild west, okay? We've all heard on the news about the twelve-year-old kid that brought a bunch of gummy bears with the teen-two-teeny parts stick on it, and ten kids overdosed, went into the hospital. And then I'd like to comment on what the selectmen said, that we were supposed to come together and we were going to work on the bylaws together, and now what he's saying is he's going to do what he wants with the host-community agreement, okay? This town, everyone sitting here, you are the host, okay? You, the town of Barry, is the host, all right? Now, if this whole town gets influenza, what you are is you are the host and you've got the flu. So what you're allowing is a disease to come into this town. Thank you.
There's a question over here.
Just wondering what we are so worried about exposing to our youth, the retail establishment is not exactly the same as corrupting the moral fiber of our community. It's not much different than a liquor store, bar, restaurant, office, supply store. I don't see what the big companies...
Did everybody hear what he said? Okay. Any other discussion, questions on the zoning bylaw? Yes?
Apparently what I previously said was misunderstood. I would like to clarify. What I was stating was the Board of Selectmen will have that authority and power to do as they will, no matter what the town says, if we do not pay attention to good bylaws that are being presented by the planning board and the Board of Selectmen with the licensing process. I do believe that tonight we did have several items brought up that could be reviewed and potentially revised to make it a simpler, less complex system, a little bit more cut and dry. I do think there is room for revision, but in no way was I sitting here saying that just because I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to do what I want and I don't really care what you say. So I'm not sure if that's what you heard, but that is not what I intended.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. This is a zoning bylaw. This requires a two-thirds vote. If it's not unanimous, we'll have to have counters, but we'll start by just having a voice vote. All those in favor of Article eleven establishing the zoning bylaw, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. I'll need counters. All those in favor of Article eleven, the zoning bylaw, please stand. Please be seated. All those opposed to Article eleven, please stand. Thank you. Be seated. The motion carries seventy-eight percent, is my tally. What are the numbers? Fifty-five to twenty-eight. Article twelve, to extend the moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the town of Barry, zoning chapter one forty-dash-eleven-point-one, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, or take any... Yes? Are we off by one? Okay. Page three, fifty-five. Page eighty-three, post sixty-six point two. That's all holdup. So a two-thirds. The numbers are fifty-five. The numbers of the vote were fifty-five and twenty-eight. Yeah, the question is whether we round up or down on that last vote, and the answer is no. So the motion... Okay, so the motion does not carry. Article eleven does not carry. Sorry about that. It was lacking one vote to reach the two-thirds. No. The, so we've moved on to Article twelve. The, so we've moved on to Article 12. To see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Barry zoning chapter 140-11.1, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion on Article 12?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the code of the Town of Barry zoning chapter 140-11.1, temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, by extending the moratorium through June 30th, 2019, or until such time as the town adopts zoning bylaw amendments that regulate recreational marijuana establishments, whichever occurs earlier.
I have a, I have a motion, I have a second. Is there any discussion of Article 12? Nika.
At this time, if we don't have a planning board bylaw, then again, we are back to the state regulations. So I would ask that you consider approving this.
She, she asked that you consider approving this. Any other discussion?
I'm not quite up on what's been happening. I'm not quite up on all of what's been happening with this process in Barry. As a person who was almost killed by a person who was high and drunk at the same time, I believe that intrinsic to the freedom of the people needs to be the safety of the people. I don't know how many other citizens of Barry have not had a chance to really get educated about it, or if they're not, you know, caring one way or the other, or are too busy, and I know that's part of life, but I would like to have the moratorium extended for only one reason, to make sure that whatever is passed in Barry protects the freedom of the will of the people who have voted in marijuana, and also protects as much as possible the safety of the citizens of Barry concerning this matter, and that neither one be infringed upon. Thank you. I don't know if I said it, but I guess I would hope that the moratorium be extended for that reason, and maybe more people can come and voice their opinion and we can actually have, have some clarity on it.
Yes.
A lot of other towns have actually created marijuana advisory committees so that their boards can work together, and it's a lot of people from all sides of it. If we extend the moratorium, it would actually give us time to do that so that maybe we could build a bridge between our boards and our community just a little bit better, because things are very close right now. So that's what I would hope if we would extend a moratorium, that we could do something like that. Thank you.
Yes.
Is there an option to amend the amount of time that we'd be extending the moratorium?
Sure.
There...
If you want to make an amendment to the motion, you can just stand up and make an amendment to the motion.
I...
You have to do that at the microphone.
I would recommend that we at least consider decreasing the amount of time that we extend the moratorium. I think there is more discussion that can happen, but I think that that should be decreased in half. I think that there's a lot of businesses that have the opportunity to have their own income increase, but also we just talked about a lot of money that our town's going to spend in tax dollars, and we've all seen what's happened with Cultivate, the amount of tax dollars they brought into the town. We could pay for that new fire truck in one week of sales, and I think that we should consider getting to it more quickly.
Do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
To three months from now that we extend the moratorium instead of to June.
If you want to make a motion, you have to say it is a motion. You say...
This is a motion.
You say, "I move..."
"I move to instead of extending the moratorium to June, that we extend the moratorium from three months from today's date."
Okay. Come up here. We need to have that motion in writing. Is there a second? Ah, hang on, there may not be a second. Is there a second to that motion? There is no second. Any further discussion? Yes.
I rise to extend the moratorium, and the perspective that I'm advocating for is this. We are a town of over 5,000 people. We have over 3,000 voters, and when you look in the room here tonight, we are making a decision in regards to what is good for the town, in regards to sales, cultivation, and other perspectives of the marijuana industry. So I think it makes sense to not only yes, the boards need to, there is some good language, there's some hard work that has been done here, there is some tweaks that have to be made, there's definitely some more clarity, and it would be a shame, an absolute shame, to make a decision with less than 200 people in a room that affects 5,000 people. The town, yes, this is an industry that is starting, there are lots of growth and bumps and perspectives, and the selectman made a comment that although he may, the board, have to follow the rules under the CCC and periods like that, I believe heads will prevail. There are planning board, the select boards, and at the end of the day, it will be us, the townsfolk, and I truly believe that, I know that we have these special meetings, and we have less, and one several years ago was less than 70 people that came for a bylaw, particular changes. That just shows that our representative government does work, but we need to be involved. And because of this, it's controversial and needs further clarity, please, yes, I think we should extend it and be able to get this in order for June unless the rules change a bit or what we have to apply in regards to what a selectman stated. So that's why I rose to in favor of this Article 12.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12 extending the moratorium, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm sorry, all those opposed? I have a nay, unfortunately, because it requires a two-thirds vote, it has to be done by counting if it's not unanimous. Please be seated. Those opposed to extending the moratorium, please stand. I see four. I don't need my counters. Article 12 carries. The total numbers were?
Seventy-nine to four.
Seventy-nine to four. Sorry about that. We're on Article 13, to amend Article 34 of June 19th, 2018, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken at the June 19th, 2018 annual town meeting, Article 34, by inserting following the words, provisional certificate of registration for a registered marijuana dispensary, the words, "for" in the Town of Barry, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the vote taken at the June 19th, 2018 annual town meeting, Article 34, by inserting the following words, provisional certificate of registration for a registered marijuana dispensary, the words, "for" in the Town of Barry.
I have a motion and a second. I do believe he meant by inserting following the words, not the following words. I think we all understood what he meant though, right? Because that's what was written here. I have a motion and a second. Can someone explain what this is? Because it doesn't make any sense to me.
Town council can explain it.
I recognize town council, guest. Please explain this.
I'm getting ready to go to bed. After we passed the, the vote that was sponsored by Mr. and Mrs. Iandoli, and it established a protection, and everybody understood it was a protection for their proposal for down the industrial area. I had a discussion with an assistant attorney general that was concerned that we had not considered the fact that the way that was worded, it would also provide any other marijuana retail outlet or cultivator, I think you were both just marijuana cultivator, to be permitted in the town under that vote. If they'd gotten a conditional provisional from the state, even though they were getting it in another town, they would be technically included in the language that was meant to only protect the Iandolis. So the suggestion from the assistant attorney general was, we amend that vote to include the language as was read by Mr. Martin.
Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not in the current, I have an ex-schoolteacher, and I see two prepositions, for and in, right after one another at the beginning of this. Is that the way the article, the amendment is meant to be? Thank you.
So the question had to do with the wording, and the answer is it's as intended. Any other discussion? Again, it's a two-thirds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. You don't need to count. Article 14, permanent basketball hoop to be installed in Nornay Park. To see if the town will vote to have a permanent basketball hoop installed in the Nornay Park South Berry area so that children can have a safe place to play and practice shots at the hoop, or take any other action relative thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town will vote to have a permanent basketball hoop installed in the Nornay Park South Berry area, the area, so the children can have a safe place to play and practice shots at the hoop.
Do I have a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? I have somebody here. Want to sit?
Hello, I'm Mary Ann Gendron, and I'm a member of the South Berry Common Committee, and we've been working 10 years on South Berry Common. It's not only the members of the board, we have many volunteers who are not a member of the board but have worked for 10 years to bring this common to where it is. We've had help from our police department with things that were going on down there, and this area has completely turned around, and this is our South Berry Common. And as I, on the flyers that I sent out to you, we have Uptown Common, and they have Rice Park for the recreation field. We have Berry Plains Common, and they have their Berry Plains Recreation Field. In our South Berry Common, we have Thornfield, which is a five-minute walk just by the Yummy Gardens Restaurant, where we have a full basketball court paved, we have the soccer field, we have the playground for all the children. We don't want recreation in our South Berry Common, it's just not the area. We want to keep it the way it is, we worked very hard. We named it Nornay Park after Matthew Triflo, who donated the town, land to the Town of Barry, and that was his request, and that's why it's named that, but it is our South Berry Common. We have functions on the weekends, and we've actually been having weddings every summer for the last six years. So we really ask that you vote this down. If there's another suitable area, that's fine, it's just not on our South Berry Common.
I do know that the Bradford apartments, who are adjacent to our common, have a complete basketball court right in the backyard, and they are, they are the butters of the common. I don't know what Mary Jane's answer is to her situation, but I don't think that if the answer is bypassing a committee and volunteers who have been working on this for 10 years. Thank you.
Hang on, there was another hand up first. Did you have?
I just wanted to agree with Mary Ann, that that park has been very well maintained. The grass is always mowed, the park is always clean. There are comfortable bins where you can sit down leisurely, they sell hot dogs, stuff like that, and then you start getting a couple kids down there hanging around a basketball hoop, and they'll draw a couple more, and a couple more, the next thing you know, I don't want to say gangs, but you will have groups of people, and that grass will turn into mud, and there won't be people to lay their blankets on in the summertime. The, while I know the Christmas ornaments could be ripped down, I just wanted to agree with Mary Ann. Thank you.
Yes.
Perhaps I wrote this wrong, there seems to be a misunderstanding here. In the Nornay Park area, I got 261 signatures because people would like to have the pine tree terrace area. It's between the two parks. It's all asphalted down. If you could just put a basketball hoop facing the asphalt of the road, it says no parking all the way up, it has dawn to dusk, it's lights on the top either side of the hill, the whole area. It's not just Mary Ann's park. It's not that. It's not in the park, it's in the area. I tried to write the thing so that it's in the area around it. Or, we're not going to, we're not going to use the grass that everybody's mowed, we're not going to use that. It's the area. It's the area. I just...perhaps the teacher? Did I write it wrong? Area beyond the park, the area above. One person said, "above the park." The area. We don't want to put it where it used to be. We don't want to put it on Main Street. The people voted last year that they wanted to put the children to play in the road. That is a road. It's safe. It's open. Certainly, our police can see, and they watch. They're not going to let bad things happen down there. This was right up about because the parents are not...we're talking about 30, 40 houses. You divide it in half. You've got 60 families that have some children. These are preschool kids, pre...not preschool.
Please move back to the microphone.
They're pre...pardon me?
Please move back to the microphone.
Walk up to the High Plains. It's too far. I did, yes. Olden days. They don't want them to walk up High Plains School. They want to be able to call out to the children that are right in that area. Nelson Road, Dufalge Square, Vernon Avenue, Main Street. That park that you're talking about, the basketball hoop, that's at the Berry Town Authority, Housing Authority, I believe it is, you can't use that. That's private. You can't use that hoop. I went through that. I went, I asked everybody about that. You can't use that hoop. It's too far for the children to go. The parents feel it's too far for the children to go. They should be able to exercise. They should be able to have a nice place to play. There's not...it's a huge park. The Triflos didn't say for their $700,000. I don't believe that...no, we don't want the children to play in the park. There's all kinds of games that they can play, but let's not say that they can't have a basketball hoop. These children aren't going to destroy it. This is our community. Let the children play. There was one man last year said, "Let the kids play." Well, we got signatures and the people, and they said, "Let the children play. Let them play in the park." They're not going to destroy it.
Thank you. Did you have a question? There's a motion to move the question. That's been seconded. That would end debate. So, we're going to vote on that. Everyone in favor of moving the question? Say aye. Not this, just a second. Those opposed to moving the question, say nay. So, the question is moved. Now, we're going to...no more debate about the question. If you want to raise a point of order now, would be the time to do it. There's a point of order to have a paper ballot. We're going to have a vote on that point of order. If 10% of the people voting vote that we're going to have a paper ballot, then we're going to have to have a secret ballot for this. All of those in favor of having a secret ballot, please say aye. Okay. That did not carry. So, that's a little odd. Usually, at least the mover would have voted. Oh, what the hell. All those opposed to having a secret ballot, say nay. Okay, we're not going to have a secret ballot. We're not going to have any more discussion. We're just going to vote on the motion. So, we're voting on Article 14, a permanent basketball hoop to be installed in the area of Nornay Park. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Nay? The motion does not carry. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a point of order. We have a motion to reconsider Article 11. Can I ask the person making that motion? Well, first, let me see if there's a second. Is there a second? That's moved and seconded. Can I ask the person who made that motion, did you vote in favor or against Article 11? You voted in favor? It failed. He's moving to reconsider a question. Town Council can help me out if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that you're allowed to move to reconsider a question that you voted in favor of. You're only allowed to move to reconsider a question if you voted against it, because you're changing your mind. Well, our bylaws that we follow town meeting time. Oh, if you have a...oh, okay. So, that motion would be in order. The motion is ruled in order. So, rolling back to Article 11. So, first, we're going to have a vote as to whether we want to reconsider Article 11. So, we're going to decide whether we're going to go back and talk about that some more. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 11, please say aye. All those opposed? This motion to reconsider is majority? It's majority. I couldn't tell. Please use normal voices. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 11, please say aye. All those opposed? The nays have it. Article 11 is not reconsidered. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjourning? Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.